Good morning. It's nine o'clock. We'll ask everybody, we'll call today's meeting to order and ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. For the public, there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. By any chance, for health reasons, an automatic defibrillator may be needed. It's in the back of the room here. And I'd ask anybody that has any cellphone electronic devices, please silence and turn them off. With that, before we call to order, I'd turn over to Commissioner Kraft for a moment of privilege.
Today, I want to say Shana Tova. It's the start of the Jewish New Year. Yesterday, observant Jews spent the day in our temple of worship, which we call a synagogue. And it's a time of joy and happiness, and comes into a time of atonement, where we ask for forgiveness for things we did that we knowingly did and intended to do and shouldn't have done, and things that happened that we didn't know we did but caused ill feelings. So, Shana Tova, Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you. With that, we'll call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is not present yet. Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the amendments of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, September 24, 2019. Item B is called for a meeting and set Tuesday, October 8, 2019, as a date for a hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Can I ask you something?
Uh, go ahead.
Yes. Val, have you explained what the Board of Equalization to the young group here?
I have that.
Well, if you want to hold, Mark, we can do it before the next items.
Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear due to technical difficulties. He votes yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
Okay. With that, we have citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on items of the Board of Equalization, related to the Board of Equalization, that are not officially listed on the agenda? Are there any citizens' comments? You want to do it now?
Yeah. Dan, would you explain the Board of Equalization, please?
Sure. DNS, Douglas County Clerk. So throughout the year, the county assessor is who originally sets the values each year. But due to state law, after March 25 of a year, any recommendations they may have have to go to the county board for approval. So there's items, these items coming up here, and not just the county assessor, but the county treasurer also submit items to the county board for items like motor vehicles. There's some nonprofit entities that don't have to pay motor vehicle taxes, but they have to be approved by the county board. So just throughout the year, the county board has to meet as a Board of Equalization to take up some matters regarded, related to land valuations, and then also motor vehicles. And there's a lot more I could get into, but that's the gist of it, so.
Thank you. Seeing those citizens' comments, we'll move on to resolutions. Item D is a resolution approving the acceptance of a late homestead exemption application for Henry J. and Ruth O'Gunn. Item E, approving applications for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer. And item F, is a request for the board to approve the treasurer's recommendations to deny applications for vehicle tax exemptions. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
And that's motion to approve D, E, F, and adjourned?
And adjourned.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Kraft.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, if I could, I'd like to find out what the problem is. I guess I, on the denial for the, looks like an Indian tribe or some kind of a tribe. It's the treasurer's office here. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Morning, Commissioners. Happy New Year.
Yep.
Tim Kavanaugh, Chief Deputy Treasurer. The applicant did not make for a timely application. They were quite a bit late. They submitted the request September 19. The purchase date was February 15, well past the statutory requirement. And it was also listed in the company name and the individual's name, which you can't do. But that has since been corrected by them, but we still can't get past the timeliness of the request. So we submit that to you after doing our due diligence.
Mr. Kavanaugh, is this a nonprofit group? Is it religious in nature, or do you know?
It is a, should be a religious group. Bin El Tribe is the name of the group, 2411 Florence Boulevard.
Okay.
It's a religious organization.
Do you know, is there a paid minister or someone who conducts services, or is there a paid staff? Do you know any of that? You may not.
I don't know that.
Okay. Well, I don't know either, but this is a, if it is a religious group, which you believe it is.
Yes.
And the, I would think that it probably is pretty much run by volunteers, people who show up and those things. They're so difficult. We come across these all the time, where someone's an individual and they just miss a deadline. It's not intentional. And you know, my feeling about these organizations is that, and I think it's a correct feeling, is that their status as a nonprofit, particularly a religious group, whatever kind of religious group, that's how we are in America. We expect everybody, we respect everyone's religious views. But, so if this is a religion, and it is apparently, and I'm sure it's run by volunteers, I think their status as a nonprofit and a religious group should be honored. And I think that any deadline, that artificial deadline that's created by statute is really insignificant when it's compared to the status that they have and the responsibility and the things they do for our community. So I would, I would move that the, the group, the religious group is granted the exemption, even though it's a little cloudy. I would make a motion to grant it.
Well, let's do this, let's do this, because there's a motion on the floor already. If the, if everybody's in consensus, Mr. Clerk, we'll change and remove.
Thank you.
Item F. But, Tim, I would like you to notify them, because I don't want to get in the habit of granting this without.
We do, sir. Every denial, I've instructed our staff, we are to contact them and tell them what the problem was, so they can hear it.
Okay. So Commissioner Boyle, if you're fine, and everybody's fine, we'll remove item F.
Sorry.
And just lay that over.
Thank you. And so we can ask them, try to contact them and ask them to come down and go from
there. So we'll remove item F from the approval.
May I?
Commissioner Kraft.
I would just like to remove it and vote on it today, because I'm going to side with Commissioner Boyle on this. It's a 2008. It's not a new vehicle by any chance. And not knowing where this tribe is, it can be a burden for them to come to Omaha within the time we have.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yeah, I'm done.
We have never, I don't remember laying any of these over. We've either voted them up or down. And they are apparently over on Florence Boulevard, so they could appear. But again, this is probably a group where someone has to take off from work and come down here and plead for a tax exemption on a 2008 Buick. I just think that's, I think they ought to be granted the exemption. And I, I don't know that, I don't see why we would lay it over. So I'd just vote on it today, like we have in the past.
Well, we'll, Mr. Clerk, we're going to pull F for the approval. And so the new motion is approval of D and E.
Okay.
And adjourned.
We got that.
So with that, the motion is to.
You said A and adjourned, or just being?
No, and removed, no.
Okay, all right.
So the motion is to approve items D and E.
So we're.
Please vote on D and E. D and E. We're going to come back to F.
Come back to this one. Okay, then I vote yes. Thank you. Sorry, I did speak up earlier.
No, no.
Commissioner Morgan.
So.
Commissioner Morgan, I need your vote. And Commissioner Kavanaugh has joined us. Motion passes seven to zero.
So what's the motion on F? Whoever's making it?
I would like to grant the exemption requested by the religious group for an exemption on a 2008 Buick.
Can I hold second?
This motion by Commissioner Boyle is second. That includes adjournment.
And adjourned.
Right.
Question. Please vote.
One moment, please.
Motion passes, Commissioners. Duda and Borgeson voting no, all their commissioners voting yes.
So they don't need to come down next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Duda.
Here.
Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is amendments and claims. Letter A is approval of the amendments of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, September 24, 2019. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, October 1, 2019. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
There are five items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Boyle is there, second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, A, resolution approving differential pay to incumbent elected officials affected by Nebraska revised statute, section 32561. It has Mr. Strong from the county attorney's office on here. I don't know if he's here, but I was wondering if there was someone who could speak to this. I've looked into it a little bit, and I have a couple of questions. Is there someone? Thank you. My understanding is this would affect only county elected and appointed officials. Is that correct?
Teresa here at county attorney's office. So it affects elected, and the board passed a resolution back in about 2003 that affects county employees in general. Subsequent to that, the statute was amended. If I may, I'll give you a longer answer, if that would be all right. It'll be a little bit of history. So subsequent to that, the statute was amended. While answering a routine question on this military differential, our office noticed the amendment and reached out to HR about updating the board's resolution since it was 16 years old. And so we proposed this resolution because the intent seems to be from 2003, that this board wishes to give that differential. And the statute now makes a distinction between electeds and non-electeds. And so we've presented this resolution for your consideration to possibly allow that differential for the electeds. We've never, it's my understanding, we've never had that come up, but we're just closing that little loophole.
So if I understand you correctly, pursuant to the 2003 Douglas County resolution, this benefit of approving differential pay to elected, incumbent elected officials was extended to all affected county employees. Is that right?
I don't fully understand your question. The 2003 resolution is attached for your consideration and review, just so that you can see it for the historical. And as you know, the, be it resolved on that 2003 resolution, says that in addition to any other rights granted to county employees by federal, state law, civil service, union contracts, any county employee who has ordered active military service shall receive the difference between their regular rate of pay, of county pay, and their military pay while on active duty. And so that 2003 resolution provided that to all county employees.
Okay. That's what I was asking. The resolution in 2003 extended this benefit not only to elected and appointed county officials pursuant to statute, but to all county employees?
The 2003 resolution was to all county employees. But subsequent to that, there was a change in the statute that kind of singled, and singled out's not maybe the best way, differentiated electeds. And so we wanted to bring before this board a resolution in addition to the 2003.
Great.
If that makes sense.
So to be clear, what we are being asked to do would allow for all county employees to enjoy this differential pay if they are doing military service?
Yes. And so the 2003 resolution would still stand, but this would now allow electeds to have that same benefit, that differential pay. Oftentimes, military pay is less than what you would receive from county employment, and it would give that to those electeds.
Right. And I did just kind of a rough survey that didn't turn up any county elected incumbents who fall into this category.
I haven't done that survey, so I cannot provide you information with regards to that. I can say I don't recall, in my tenure in this back row, an elected who was called up to military service and had this situation occur.
Okay. So with the statute and this resolution, just so we're clear, all incumbent elected officials, all appointed officials, which is the classes dealt with in the statute, and all employees, which is the class in the 2003 resolution, would enjoy differential pay if they were to be called up for military service?
I think I understand your question. I believe the answer to be yes. I think the resolution before you today specifically addresses elected and not necessarily appointed. But I believe that through the, through the coverage of both resolutions, the intent is all county employees.
Okay.
It's Commissioners' time. If you want another five, you've got it.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Teresa, you can jump in if I'm misstating anything. But I guess for lack of a better word, better word, regular county employees, they receive the differential pay while they're serving. This statute basically forbids elected officials from receiving differential pay while they're serving, but they'll, they'll earn that amount once they come back. So they'll get the differential pay, but it won't, they won't receive it until once they're done serving. And the statute, for whatever reason, that's, so we have to follow the statute. So that's kind of the difference between, you know, non-elected, non-appointed county officials. They'll get, they'll still get the differential pay. They'll get it while they're actually serving. The employees that fall under this statute, they don't receive it until, they just get a lump sum once they get back.
I mean, I think it's important that we encourage people to participate in the defense of our country and not be penalized for doing that. And so I'm in favor of that. And just recognizing the fact that this particular thing wouldn't currently affect anybody. Is that?
Yeah, correct. I checked with the payroll administrator in my office, and there's no current elected officials that are active military.
Thank you.
There is a motion, the second. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll go on to item three, recognition and proclamations. Letter A is the resolution recognized in the month of October, 2019, as Youth Justice Awareness Month. I'll read the first half of this and turn over to Commissioner Borgeson. And then if any of the sea of orange wants to have comment, please be welcome. Whereas the month of October is recognized annual, as annually, as Youth Justice Awareness Month, and whereas the role of juvenile justice system is to rehabilitate and treat at-risk youth while holding them accountable for their actions and maintaining public safety, and whereas, while progress has been made to reform juvenile justice system, so that doesn't look, so that it doesn't look and operate like the adult criminal justice system, much more progress needs to be made. And whereas it is acknowledged that, whenever possible, keeping youth within their families, homes, and communities is best practice. And Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And whereas there continues to be an overrepresentation of youth of color in the juvenile justice system known as racial and ethnic disparities, or RED. And whereas this board is continually striving to reform the local juvenile justice system, including addressing the RED problem, supporting effective community programs as an alternative to detention, addressing mental health and substance abuse issues, and engaging in constructive dialogue with internal and external stakeholders and the public to improve the outcomes for at-risk youth in our county. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board recognizes the month of October, 2019, as Youth Justice Awareness Month in Douglas County, and encourages those within government, the private sector, and the community to work together to engage in successful juvenile justice reform, dated this first day of October, 2019.
That a motion, Commissioner Borges?
Yes.
There's a motion seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Would anyone from the public who came down want to say anything before we pass it?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. It would be nice to have this proclamation in front of us to read. There's been a lot of proclamations here in the last few weeks, few days. And I oppose this, I think, for positive reasons. So bear me out, please. I'd like to submit this to Dan.
Copy to the Commissioners.
It's sort of my way of answering one of the most recent resolutions from last week. And in my comments in the later afternoon body, I was more or less accused of being a liar, et cetera. I don't like that. I'm glad to see some young people here today because they can learn a little bit about the difference between the republic and the democracy. And I'll end my remarks very shortly. I started last week pointing out that we swore at each of the meetings to allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, not to a democracy. After my comments, at which they didn't like, the chairman of that body sat right there and declared us a democracy again.
Larry, let me bring you in, because you're speaking to the city council meeting. This is totally not on that topic. So unless you're talking on.
All right. My complaint is, I'd like to see this resolution in print, please.
It is.
Mainly because there could be a constitutional question on it. Thank you.
Note to the public, the resolution is available online, and it was out a couple of days here before. Anyone else?
Levance Dennis Williams, 1941 South 42nd Street, Suite 214, Omaha, Nebraska. I speak on behalf of all of the people who are working every day to help address youth justice and juvenile justice reform. I'm so happy that Douglas County has joined with the national organization, the Campaign for Youth Justice, which has been doing this for 2009, of recognizing October as juvenile awareness a month. It's important that we keep this on the forefront. And one thing I would like to recognize on the Commissioners for, on behalf of the Douglas County Racial and Ethnic Disparity Committee, is your effort to elevate the issue of reducing and involving the community in helping to eradicate the disparity that exists with the minority youth in this community. While there are a lot of strives to be made in juvenile justice, one thing I do say consistently is that over the past four years, this body has taken major steps in reducing the racial and ethnic disparity. And so I want to speak and acknowledge the role that you all have played in making our job easier in terms of reducing this. And so, again, thank you for your efforts of recognizing this month. And I thank you in advance for your continued efforts to support us in not just reducing racial and ethnic disparity, but making our system more fair and practical for all kids that are involved. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh and Commissioner Boyle.
And I see that Mr. Alexander from our Douglas County Youth Center is here, and this question probably would be best addressed to him. But my understanding from your monthly reports to us, and I've been here four years, is that our minority population incarcerated kids in the youth center, who are minorities, constitute an overwhelming majority of the youth center census population. I'm talking like upper 70%. Is that about right?
That would be, that would be correct.
Okay. And it's been that way, I mean, I've been here for four years, and I make a point of asking you at each report what those percentages are. It's been that way for at least the last four years that I'm aware of. Is that correct?
Yeah, that report has a 10-year timeline, and I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, you're not misspeaking.
So we haven't seen any movement on minorities being overrepresented in our youth center. These are kids who are incarcerated in a community that has maybe a 15, 18% minority population at a rate of 75 to 80%. So just for the record, at least as long as I've been here, and if the 10 years that you encapsulate is accurate, there hasn't been any movement away from that overrepresentation of minority children in this most onerous portion of the juvenile justice system. Just want to point that out for the public so that you aren't misled by the fact that there hasn't been any progress, really, in this at all for that period of time. Thank you.
Let me know for the record, that saying there hasn't been any progress is an unfair characteristic. I mean, over the time, that number's been up and down. And to then also just label it to juvenile justice is an unfair piece. I mean, we have overrepresentation in the adult population. And so I just want to, for the record, state that progress is a, there's a definition of progress. There's been progress made, I think, in respects to the awareness, the political will, and I think the effort to get there. That, that number of where they've been has been rolling for a while, but there's no need to say that there's definitely not an issue with that. So with that, please.
Levance Dennis Williams, 1941 South 42nd Street. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you're not correct. The efforts that they have taken over the past four years, I've been involved in this for 20 years, and I serve on national boards, I serve on national committees, and I'm often brought into communities to help set up these programs. And studies will show that the efforts that have been taken over the last three years, it's going to take about five to seven years for us to see the results. But the motion has been put in place. You guys have hired a full-time coordinator for racial and ethnic disparity. We have held four community meetings that have helped to educate the communities. We have brought in training. All that is because of the efforts that you all have been involved in in the last four years. years. You're not going to see this matter turn around overnight. This is a 33-year-old problem that they have been tracking. It's going to take some time. And it would be misleading for you to suggest that just because our population has not shown a decrease, that the efforts are intended to mislead. No, I'm not misleading. I'm saying the facts. The efforts that you all have put in place basically supersede any other community that I've been involved in. And I've been involved in many communities where this problem is just tremendous. But it's going to take time for you to see the results. And I am not misleading when I say I thank you all for your efforts because you all have put in motion a process that future generations are going to benefit by. And it's just going to take some time. But I hope you will join us in some of the community forums that we've been holding to educate the community. And it's a problem that goes beyond just the system. We have brought in an expert just in October of last year that helped us identify the six factors that contribute to our issue with racial and ethnic disparity. And that go beyond just pointing a finger at the system. And we have been very consistent in holding meetings to help educate the families and the communities in our role. But it's going to take some time. And I, in fact, I invite you to come to our forum October 16th where we look at the educational factors. And you will be able to see in December a compilation of the information we have gathered that will lead to effective strategies to continue our efforts of reducing the disparity.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle, Morgan, and Kavanaugh.
I have observed and been involved with the work of the youth center for quite some time. And I wanted to speak to sort of a different tone, but I wanted to thank Commissioner Borgerson for bringing this to us and to Mr. Rogers. But you two have been so involved in this and you're so knowledgeable, and I rely on you for guidance and information. And your leadership has really made a difference. And I know the raw figures may appear to be higher or remain high, but the effort, the difference is that we have people like Ms. Stennis, and we have Mr. Alexander and his staff, which oddly enough happens to be here today. But I think that we're headed in the right direction and the commitment that we have, this is not an easy problem to solve. This goes way, way deep into the community and needs attention. And the work that Ms. Stennis is doing, and particularly with coming up with what the factors are, is extremely important. And if nothing else, if nothing else, it shows that this county board is aware of it, we're not ignoring it, and we're committed to making it better. And that should be something worth in itself. And it crosses party lines. We really don't get too involved in party lines except for Commissioner Duda. No, anyway, just joking. Anyhow, but we don't. And these are the things that, you know, we believe in certain principles. One of them where I believe is, so thank you very much, Commissioner Borgerson. And Mr. Chair, I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
I just want to thank Yvonne Ms. Stennis for your comments and your work that you do in our community. And Mary Ann, I want to pay my respects to you and Chris and all the efforts you put forth. We're trying to make the changes, and I know there are changes that have taken place and more needs to be done. But I know that we're all working toward that diligently with community input on a constant basis. And thank you, Mike, for your comment also.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I support this resolution. I support the move away from overrepresentation of our ethnic or racial minorities in the criminal justice system and the juvenile justice system. I'm simply pointing out that it hasn't occurred in an appreciable fashion. Numbers don't lie. We get reports every month. And consistently, overwhelmingly, the population of our incarcerated children are minorities in an overwhelmingly Caucasian community. This has existed over a long period of time. So holding meetings, and I have over the last year, held over a dozen of these forums. I don't believe that Ms. Stennis was at any of them, although she was invited. Adding bureaucratic positions, going to conferences and bringing in experts demonstrably doesn't affect this at all. The numbers don't lie. Every month we get the reports, and the minority population incarcerated in our youth center remains overwhelmingly in the majority. So I endorse this sentiment. I think that we should move, as Commissioner Boyle pointed out, in a bipartisan, united way towards doing it. And, you know, I'm all in favor of that. It's just a statement of reality that's confirmable by records and the reports that we receive monthly, that this is the state of reality right now. Overwhelmingly, minority kids are the majority in our incarcerated population at the youth center. Thank you.
Commissioner, go first. Ma'am?
Colleen Ruff. I'm employed at Project Harmony Child Advocacy Center. And I guess I just want to make the point that there are a lot of collaborative efforts going on in this community. And I'll give you an example of one, which we're currently involved in. In 2017, Omaha Police Department brought to our attention that within the child victim sexual assault unit, they were working 3,200 missing juvenile reports in the Omaha area. When we started looking at the statistics of those juveniles, half of those kids were child welfare and juvenile justice involved. When we got together with the county attorney's office, the juvenile assessment center, and the Omaha Police Department, and our child advocacy center, we took action to do something. We now are serving the non-system-involved juveniles to try to prevent them from becoming child welfare or juvenile justice involved. I think there's also research and statistics from Douglas County intake probation that show in one year, over 600 kids that they surveyed, over half of them had multiple missing juvenile reports. They had run several times. Eventually, those kids start to pick up charges and they end up in the juvenile justice system. So we wrote a grant. We have an intake coordinator and a mental health therapist. When Omaha Police Department picked these kids up, sometimes they're saying they may be being abused, whatnot, they're directed to come to Project Harmony. We're doing an interview with those kids. We're calling in the families. We're serving those kids and families, trying to keep them out of the system. And this, I have to credit the Omaha Police Department for bringing this volume of missing juvenile reports in the Omaha metro area to our attention. But this is only one of many collaborative prevention efforts going on in the community that we're not going to see results right away, but eventually I believe we will. And I think we are making a difference, and I could tell you some stories. But I won't take up any more time. We are presenting at the OJS Provider Meeting, October 28th, and we're going to specifically talk more about this program if anyone is interested in more information.
Thank you. Sure. Ma'am, if you, can you provide the clerk on details on that meeting is so the board can have it? Okay. Sure, yeah, you can provide to the clerk now. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I refuse to allow negative comments to shadow this resolution because this was to be brought forth to not only thank, but show our appreciation for all of you who are sitting in the audience that work as providers, as advocates, as family for our youth. And while I put this on the agenda, Levon Stennis is the one who brought it to my attention and said we should do this. And she helped me figure out how we could at least get some community providers here. I've been here longer than four years, and I can tell you that we have made a difference in the number of youth who are in our facility. Are we where we want to be? Heavens, no. We are not. But we no longer have, on an average, 181 children in our youth detention center. We have created alternatives for those youth of all colors to be able to take advantage of those alternatives. And it's because of the work that our community has done in conjunction with us, in collaboration with us, in cooperation with us, that we are able to make that progress. So today, while things are not perfect, nobody said they were, it is to recognize you all sitting out there and the work that you do every single day to try to make it better for our youth, especially those of color who are in our youth detention center or in our services. So I, for one, appreciate, and I recognize, and I want to continue to work with all of you so that we stay the course and that we do continue to reduce the number of youth in our facilities. So again, thank you. And at some point, Mr. Chair, if we could, when everyone's done speaking, if they could, if we could ask them to come down and just state their name and what organization they're with-
Sure.
And then be able to stay up so we can get a picture, I would really appreciate that. But again, thank you all, and thank you, Levon, for bringing this subject to our attention.
Thank you. Let me make one point, and then I'll ask everybody to come. Just, you know, the point was made about conferences and their effects. You know, I think it's a kind of a low shot at conferences. I mean, conferences is where, you know, I saw it, Jedi. And we were able to get it. Conferences is where we found step up. And so, you know, nobody is out there reinventing the wheel. I think conferences are highly effective, and it just depends on how you use your time when you're there. So with that, anybody willing to, this is not a mandate, if you want to put your name on the record, please. Janaye, if you want to go.
Thank you. Janaye Pancook, Executive Director of Operation Youth Success, 1819 Dodge Street, UNO Community Engagement Campus, Suite 219. Commissioner Borgerson, you stole the words right out of my mouth. We're the collective impact backbone for juvenile justice reform here in Douglas County, and we have over 200 to 250 community volunteers that show up monthly and help guide this reform work from the ground up. We have lived, experienced juvenile justice council youth that show actually to the point now where we're breaking off into two groups, an older group and a younger group, to make sure we get that feedback. In large part was actually from feedback from a juvenile who had been in the system, experienced the juvenile justice center, went back and met with the superintendent and his staff, and they had a great conversation. And in that, this juvenile recognized, hey, things have improved. She stated that. This is different than when I was here, that highlighted the need that we need to engage younger that have more newer experiences there because it's already changed in the four years that she had been out of the youth center for the better. And this was regarding family visitation. So again, this work is a work that we are never going to get there. There, hopefully, we'll always continue to move forward. We're always going to have opportunities to improve. But I would be remiss if I did not take this opportunity to publicly thank and recognize all of these volunteers. When you think about about 250 people, you're thinking almost 200 hours, if that's one, a work group goes one hour, which usually they typically go one and a half to two. 200 hours of volunteer time a month people in the community and service provider realms are putting towards juvenile justice reform in this county. That also doesn't happen without the buy-in and leadership of this board. So not only those volunteers, it is truly collaborative with public, private. And so I want to also thank you, recognize all of you for your efforts and support as we continue this journey. And it is a journey, but we need all the partners together. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If no one else wants to, then there's a motion, the second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So Lee is here, we'll have one big picture if the- Yeah. Well, I thought they were going to- Well, we're going to take this picture, so if you want to come down, we're going to do it. Dan, you ready? Okay.
That's nice of you, and I was going up there to thank them all.
Well, I'm going to start this so I can interrupt all of them. Item B, it's recognition of individuals who helped Douglas County earn its 15th consecutive Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and its 10th consecutive Award of Outstanding Achievement in Popular Finance Reporting. Mr. Clerk's going to speak, but before he does, let me, I need to ask, under item five in public hearings, letter B, is there someone here from Premier Nails Bar? Can you come right here so I can talk to you real quick? Mr. Clerk?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. Like the item says, Douglas County has recently earned its 15th consecutive Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and then its 10th consecutive Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Financial Reporting. So I'll talk about these awards and recognize the individuals who helped us earn these awards. But before I get into that, you're going to hear three acronyms throughout my remarks. And so I'll tell you what those acronyms stand for now, and then I'll repeat it once I get to those acronyms during my remarks. But you're going to hear GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, and I'll explain who they are in a minute here. CAFR, which is C-A-F-R, that's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And then PAFR, P as in Paul, A-F-R, and that's Popular Annual Financial Report. So these awards come from the GFOA, which, like I said, is the Government Finance Officers Association. The GFOA is 113 years old, and it represents public finance officials throughout the United States and Canada. The association has more than 20,000 members, and its mission is to advance excellence in public finance. And one of the ways the GFOA goes about that is by providing these recognition programs. So the GFOA has a program called Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And the purpose of this is to encourage state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. So basically, doing more than just a basic audited financial statement and prepare a CAFR, or a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So the goal of a CAFR is to- Report. So the goal of a CAFR is to display the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. And if the GFOA feels that a government agency has succeeded in doing that, then they will recognize that government agency with the Certificate of Achievement. So the 2018 fiscal year was the 15th year Douglas County participated in the program. And for the 15th year in a row, Douglas County earned their Certificate of Achievement. And I checked the GFOA's website yesterday and we are the only county in Nebraska to have this distinction. So there are many people throughout the county that contribute to the CAFR report, but the majority of the work falls on the Finance Division Administrator and the accountants of the Douglas County Clerk's Finance Division. So these ladies put in a lot of time on the report, I mean, months of time. In fact, right now, they're working on the next one. At times, the preparation of the report can be pretty stressful and the report's due by the end of the calendar year. So unfortunately, a lot of times, stress levels are at its highest during the holidays, which I know is no fun. So it's very gratifying when we get this award because it's so time consuming and people put in a lot of time and effort in it. So with that, I'd like to recognize Jody Campbell. She's our Finance Division Administrator. And three of our four accountants are here, sitting behind me, Don Onig, Heather Jenkins, and Semidol Gates-Culbert. Lori Conway's also an accountant of ours. She's not here today. But one note about Lori is she's been involved in all 15 of these reports. So also, I have to mention Chief Deputy County Clerk Sherry Larson. She also puts in a lot of time to this as well. So I'd like to thank these individuals, obviously, and congratulate them for helping the county earn this award. I'm pretty proud of them and I hope they're proud of themselves for helping us get this because like I said, we're the only county in Nebraska that's earning this award. There are other people I got to point out, too, though. So the Administrative Office helps with the preparation of this report. So I'd like to thank Joe Lorenz and then Sherry Albin, John Slabatsky, and Mike Dorniki for their work. BKD is our external auditor and so they play a big role in the report. So I'd like to thank BKD. And then we also get some information from Sign Johnson, Aon, and Silverstone. We have to work with them for some of the reports that are included in this CAFR. So thank you to them. And then finally, on this award, there's probably at least one person from every county office that's involved at some point during the preparation of this report. So I hesitate to specifically mention offices because, you know, out of fear of probably an office feeling like they should be included. But I do feel like I should probably point out the Treasurer's Office and the Health Center. I feel like they generally have a little bigger of a role than most of the other offices in this report. But the bottom line is, we can't get this report done without the cooperation of every county office and department. I mean, sometimes we're asking for information that's, you know, not easy to put together. But working together over the years, we've gotten a lot more efficient at putting together some of these things. So I just want to thank everybody who helped Douglas County earn its 15th consecutive Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. So that's the first award. The second award is the Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting. So in addition to the CAFR program, the GFOA has a Popular Annual Financial Reporting Awards Program or PAFR program. And this is to encourage state and local governments to extract information from the CAFR and then produce a PAFR report, specifically designed to be easily understandable for those who may not have a financial, public finance background. And if the GFOA feels the government agency has succeeded in doing so, then they will recognize that government agency with the award. So the 2017-18 fiscal year was the 10th year Douglas County has participated in the PAFR program. And for the 10th year in a row, we have earned the award. And last I checked, not only, again, I checked yesterday, we're not just the only county for this award, we're not only the only county in Nebraska getting it, we're the only public, only government agency getting this award in the state of Nebraska. So the financial information used in the PAFR, like I said, comes from a larger CAFR report. So I could pretty much thank the same people I just talked about for the other award. However, I do want to say that Sherry Larson, Chief Deputy County Clerk, is the one who took the information from the CAFR and created the PAFR report. And she's been doing it for a couple of years now. And I think over the years, she's also made some cosmetic changes that I think have made the report better. And then, once she gets done doing that, then the Finance Division Administrator and our accountants will look it over before we submit it. So thank you, ladies, once again, for all your work on this. If anyone would like to see the county's CAFR report or PAFR report, if you went to douglascountyclerk.org, and we have a tab called County Financial Reports, and that'll take you to, we actually have them going back quite a few years. So you can just only view this one, but you could view previous ones as well. Again, that's douglascountyclerk.org and click on the tab labeled County Financial Reports. So again, congratulations, everybody involved, and thank you for letting me tell you all about. By the way, there is no resolution. It was just, I just wanted to point out that the county had earned these awards. And I could probably do this every year, but I think going forward, I'll just maybe do increments of five every time we get to these milestones of, but I thought the 15th in a row and 10th in a row were pretty big deals. I just wanted to present them to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. You got some comments. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I want to congratulate County Clerk Dan Ash and his staff for this great achievement. It's really something. I have benefited greatly from the expertise that your staff and you offer in interpreting what is often very, very hard to comprehend and grasp, fiscal details of Douglas County financing. Thank you for that and your patience has been great. I also want to commend you for making it clear to the public, both through the website and I know that individuals from the public are always welcome at your office to come in and ask questions and get answers. You really should have a resolution. I'm gonna look into having a resolution because this is a remarkable achievement, unique in the state for you and your office to achieve this. And I really want to commend you for basically working up to that, I know, guiding principle that you have of we work for you in terms of how you perform for the public. You really meet that and exceed that goal. And this is, this is proof of that. So congratulations. Good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
A fellow who really set a very high standard in your office, Tom Kavanaugh. And when, when he died and your name was suggested, I, as you know, I told the Commissioners, let's not even look at someone else. We have the candidate who can carry on and you have done an excellent job. You are truly a credit to, well, first of all, I'm glad I said you should have it. But the other thing is, you're a real credit to the taxpayers of the county and to, I know the way you treat the employees that work with you. And you're really doing a terrific job, Dan. And this is just another example of that. And I wanted to take a moment to thank you and congratulate you and your staff and the people that make all this happen. I can tell that it's a real good working relationship with your people and that's really important. So congratulations on this award and this acknowledgement. It's well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Dan, you really have stepped up these last three and a half years approximately and we thank you for that. I also want to thank you and all your staff for that. And also you recognizing Joe Lorenz, our Finance Director, as part of this. I appreciate you bringing his name up because he is another great asset to us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Crowe?
Dan, again, congratulations. You were a tremendous help when you, from day one when you got on and I was trying to get that financial transparency of who we write checks to and what they are for. Now, if we have some young people, young Southeast Asian, I forgot what the rest of the letters are, but that's, Leadership Initiative, thank you, people here, would you explain to them how any of them or any of our citizens can go to your website and look up how much Mark Kraft spent on travel this year, how much I spent on food? Would you explain that to people, please?
Sure. So we have, well, we have a couple of different things. So each week, we, there was an item earlier in the meeting, it was Minutes and Claims. So it's two items. And the second item is basically approving payments that we have to make to people we do business with. So if we have a, you know, a contract with somebody or need to pay someone for services provided to the county, the county board has to approve it. And so each week we post a listing of who's getting paid. There's a description of why they're getting paid and then it'll show you what department the service was provided to and then the amount of money. But there's a thing that Commissioner Kraft talked about called, it's called Annual Supplier Payments. And there's a, it'll show throughout the year, you know, like Commissioner Kraft said, if we had to reimburse him for some expenses maybe while he made while traveling to a conference or something like that, it would show you how much we paid him and when it was. So it's a pretty cool tool. So yeah, if you went to the tabs on douglascountyclerk.org, there's one tab called Weekly Supplier Payments. And that just shows who's getting paid that week. And then there's Annual Supplier Payments and it just shows who's been paid what amount, total amount through the, some of the previous years. I think it goes back 2018 is pretty specific. It's got a lot more details, but we do have a list for 2017, 16, and 15. And of course, if anyone had questions about what they're looking at or wanted more information, we could always, we have our contact information on the webpage and they can contact us for it.
Thank you. So to the young people in the audience, this is a degree of transparency to prevent any of us from getting greedy or abusing our office, our position. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, I appreciate the kind remarks you guys made to me, but honestly, it's, the majority of the work falls on the shoulders of the six individuals from the Clerk's office that I pointed out. And obviously, Joe and his staff help as well. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. That will go on to citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Commissioners related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Good morning. My name is Val McPherson, 6415 Glenwood Road, Omaha, Nebraska. And I would like to take this opportunity to tell you what an honor it is to, once again, for the eighth time, to bring a delegation of YSEELs, Young Southeast Asian Leaders. As I said, this is the eighth time that I've had the honor of introducing them to you. This would make 169 individuals that have sat in on your council meeting. Thank you again for this opportunity. This particular program was created approximately five years ago. UNO had the opportunity to apply for this State Department grant. UNO was one of the very few universities in the United States to receive it. The initial three-year grant was for three institutes, each being five weeks, and each with the theme of civic engagement and leadership. During that three-year period of time, because of the excellence that the State Department saw in the UNO's program, they were given the opportunity to host two additional institutes for a total of five under the original grant. UNO thought that that would probably be the end of this program. Instead, the State Department asked UNO to reapply for another three years and to do another six institutes and to oversee the YSEEL institutes at two other universities, the University of Arizona and Kennesaw State University. And so it has been an honor for me to be involved from the very beginning with this program and have the opportunity to meet 169 future leaders of Southeast Asia. And I say future leaders with all certainty. These individuals have been nominated by people in their country, one of 10 Southeast Asian countries. They have then been further vetted by our embassy in their country. They have then gone on to further vetting by the U.S. Department of State. And here they are in Omaha, Nebraska. This vetting process is the same basically as is used by the International Visitor Leadership Program, the State Department's oldest program, which turns 80 years old next year. Just to give you an idea of who may be sitting before you today, in the history of the International Visitor Leadership Program, over 500 of the alumni have gone on to be either president or prime minister of their country. So I would be honored to entertain any questions you might have at this time.
Mr. Chair, usually during public comments, we're not supposed to respond. May I ask if we waive the rules for the...
I don't want to do that.
You don't want to do that, okay.
Yeah, I would just like to ask, anybody who wants to comment, please do.
And if we could have the individuals, each one come up and comment on their country, where they're from.
Yes, and I have also been asked by at least one of the YSEELs if they could make a brief comment to the Commissioners.
Yes, they can.
Please.
Okay. Pat, would you like to say something?
Good morning, Commissioners, and good morning to all my Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative fellows, ladies and gentlemen. It is a great pleasure for me to be speaking before you and on behalf of the Young Southeast Asian Leaders Initiative here today. We're 21 of us from 10 countries around Southeast Asia. This fellowship is my first visit to Nebraska and it is among the first visits to America for all 20 of us. I first came to know about this program in 2015 during my sophomore year. I applied and I failed on my first attempt. Yet, I applied again in the second year and I also failed. But here I am, on a third attempt, knowing that I will be here and it will worth it. The idea of giving up on this program has never crossed my mind even one second because I believe that this program will give me something worth it, and it is worth it. This opportunity, like what we are having here today, is very much privileged and we are thankful for it. It may only be in a week that since 21 fellows from 10 Southeast Asian countries has set our feet in Nebraska. But many things, many great, great things has happened to us. We learned, we lived, and we laughed together. We had a lot of joy, a lot of fun, and a lot of thoughts. Apart from the robust bonding between us, we have a great chance to interact with professionals, friends, and many important people of the United States of America. This, in fact, has shown clearly how the United States of America has valued Southeast Asians as it one of the strategic partner among the world. This program has highly invested in our human capital of the Southeast Asian leaders, especially the younger generation. Ladies and gentlemen, I asked one question to some of the Commissioners this morning of what is the average age of the Commissioners across the United States? And the reason behind that is because I am so afraid that the issues and the concern of younger generation will be neglected or overlooked by the Commissioners. But listening here this morning, hearing about the youth justice awareness and the concern of justice, juvenile justice reform brought up earlier this morning, has, my concern about younger generation will be overlooked in this chamber has completely gone. And I cannot, I am not the citizens here, but I can be the representative of youth and thank you all for that efforts that you have put and invest in younger generation in your own countries and in Southeast Asia. In a bigger level, it is also safe that to say that the United States has played a crucial role in supporting ASEAN's economy as one of the role in supporting ASEAN's economy as one of the biggest trading partners in Southeast Asia. The foreign direct investment from the United States to Southeast Asia is among the top. And on the other hand, clothes, consumer products, mostly manufactured from our country. So, it is safe to say that we, the United States and Southeast Asia, are better off if we work together. Therefore, I am delightful to, that we are given this meaningful opportunity to be sitting here, meeting with you, the commissioners of Douglas County. I thank all parties involved in making this happen. Special thanks to you, Val, and all the commissioners that allow us to be here and allow me to be up here speaking in front of you. I also hope that this partnership between the United States of America and Southeast Asia in both the bigger level and the people-to-people connection would be continuing to grow and prosper. I hope that we, the young people, will still be given this privilege opportunity to learn and grow, to be the better, as here in YSL, we believe that it is never too young.
Too lean!
I thank you.
Commissioner Kraft, would you still like everyone to introduce themselves?
Yes, I would, at least their name and their country.
Okay, everyone will need to do this quickly. So, we'll start with you, and then we'll move this way, and then this way. Okay?
In their area of governmental interest.
Okay. So, name, country, and interest.
Good morning. My name is Joy. I'm from Vietnam. Yeah, so my civic engagement interest area is about youth empowerment, especially with skill, communication skill, and soft skills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sunil Ansem Manisam. I'm from Laos. So, for my interest in civic engagement is about empowerment and education and soft skill. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Seon. I'm coming from Vietnam, and I'm interested in youth empowerment and environmental issue. Thank you.
Nice. Great.
Good morning. I'm Arif from Malaysia. I'm the youngest YSL member here. I'm also the youngest person in the local council back in Malaysia, Slango. And I look forward to understanding and exploring what is different and where we can implement and improvise certain things back home. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Wu from Vietnam. So, my area of interest is about education, especially education for the teenager in rural area. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sari. I'm from Siem Reap City in Cambodia. And my special interest of civic engagement is education and youth empowerment. Thank you.
Wow, nice.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name is Anjas Pramono. I come from Indonesia. And I was the one and the only one disabilities people in this program. Thank you, United States Government. I hope this will be a good relationship between Southeast Asia, especially for Indonesian government. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Kumyo from Myanmar. My civic engagement area is youth empowerment and political education. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is William. I'm from Indonesia, and my civic engagement interest in economic development, especially in the rural area, and also in youth empowerment. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Police Lieutenant Krithanon Khanka, Thai law enforcement. And my interest area is on public safety, development, especially active shooter response and prevention, transnational crime, and anti-terrorism.
Hello, I'm Pichara Angso Suknur. I'm from Thailand. I am a policy consultant, and my focus area is public policy and media literacy. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Moon from Myanmar, and my area of interest is legal education and youth empowerment in my country. Thank you.
Mabu Hai, good morning to each and everyone. I'm Norwinkin Usman from the Philippines. My civic engagement interest is indigenous people, indigenous people and youth empowerment. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Una from Brunei-Roslyn, the only one representation here. I would like to increase awareness and social problems regarding youth in Brunei-Roslyn. Thank you.
Hello, good morning, everyone. My name is Rosemary DeGloria. I come from Timor-Leste. My civic engagement interest is youth empowerment. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dion. I'm from Indonesia, and my civic engagement interest is in quality health for women and children, especially in rural area of Indonesia. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Esa. I come from Indonesia. My interest is in education and environment. Thank you.
Good morning. Salamat pagi. I'm Isabella from Malaysia, and I'm a proud family. So, I would love to empower women and underprivileged communities. Thank you.
Good morning. And so, my name is Ani from Thailand. My civic engagement interest is education and also youth empowerment. Thank you.
Good morning. Mabu Hai, my name is Hannah from the Philippines. My civic engagement interest is indigenous people empowerment and education. Thank you.
Morning, everyone. My name is Frankie Cortez from the Republic of the Philippines. So, my civic engagement is disaster risk reduction and management and climate change adaptation and mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. We're still in pub, I mean, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments on any items not listed on the agenda? Going once. Okay. Commissioner Wu.
I asked Commissioner Kraft why we weren't doing a photo, and he said we did one out there. And I wasn't there because I came in the back door.
It was a really good picture, too. We're very proud of it.
Let's go. May we do it again? May we?
We can. Let's do it before we go on to the next slide. So, that... Go. Commissioner Kraft, you wanted a closing comment.
Yes, if I could have a moment of personal...
Commissioner Kraft.
To the group, I'm not positive I mentioned it, but this has been presented live to the citizens of our county, at least those who have cable or those who connect with the internet. It is also on the Douglas County, Nebraska, and the word Nebraska is important because many states have Douglas counties. But it's also visible on the Douglas County, Nebraska website. So, you are being presented to the world as a YSL group. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're going to go on to public hearings. Item five. Item A is the Class C 123299 License for Beer Wine and Steel Spirits on and off sale for Social 192 LLC Doing Business as Social 1009 at 1011 South 192nd Street, Omaun, Nebraska, Douglas County. And the manager application is Jacqueline M. Altman. We will open the public hearing.
Yes, good morning, Chairman Rogers, County Commissioners. Here on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
See no questions. We'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item B is Class number 1-123031 License for Beer Wine and Steel Spirits on sale only for Tahan Vo, Doing Business Premier Nails Bar at 18924 Evans Street, Suite 105, Omaun, Nebraska, Douglas County, 68022. We'll open the hearing for it now. I'm going to ask Ms. Wu if she'll come up. We had a discussion about this, and this is the situation that the her, she did not give notice to the surrounding neighbors. So, my understanding and some sidebar that we had that we have a couple of weeks, it's not an emergency. She said she didn't know all of the rules to that degree. So, if we, we'll leave, we can leave the public hearing open, give her time to talk to the clerk's office to get ideas exactly what you want. And my understanding is you should have time to get back here to fulfill your liquor commission's piece. Am I right? Right.
Yes. Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. We just want to clarify that you've sent notices to the neighboring property owners, and they need to have it 10 days, 10 business days prior to the hearing. And so, we do have time to continue the public hearing now, a couple of weeks. But I think my question is whether or not you've sent out the notices yet and when that 10 days would run from.
Hello, everyone. It's my second time doing this, but I forgot how I did it before. But I have the label from title court, the 500 label already, but I wasn't sure, like, what to send to those people, like the actual letter. So, I've talked to Alan, and she kind of guided me already. So, yes, I will send it out.
So, we'll just keep it open here. When you're ready, we'll go ahead. So, hopefully, that'll be within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Okay. Note, we have, we have a meeting here the next two weeks. So, if you don't get it here then, it's going to be a week off, and you might miss your deadline. So, you got two weeks there to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it would probably be... Commissioner?
Okay, thank you so much.
Excuse me. I think it'd probably be best to go ahead and set the hearing, or continue the hearing date for a specific date of October 15th. Is that the...
Well, just keep the public hearing open?
No. Tracy, your county attorney's office, you need to set it for a specific date for two reasons. One, it's been publicized for today's date. And so, in the open meeting, you're going to tell the public, hey, this is the date that it's continued to. And two, the applicant needs a date certain to put in the letter that she's notifying the folks, hey, come to this meeting on this day if you would like to protest. So, we need a date certain.
That's fine. We'll be on the 15th, ma'am.
Thank you.
All righty.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to item C, rezoning request for Greg A. Clasen, applicant from AG and RR-2 to AG of an appropriate 11.83 acre tract from part of the northeast 1/4 of Section 4 and part of the northern half of Section 3 in Township 16 North Range, 10 east of 6 PM. Parcel numbers involved are 0111560014 and 0111560006. General location is east side of North 240th Street and south of 1471 North 240th Street. We'll open the public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Doug Cook, your Douglas County Planner. So, the Planning Commission met on August 14th. Eight of nine members were present. This is a rezoning request of an approximate 12-acre tract, which is a part of a legally described 90-acre lot. And the rezon is from RR2 to AG. So, it's a little different than normal. So, this came to staff's attention while discussing with the owner plans for building a single-family lot on the 90 acres. So, you see right there the RR2 area, which again is part of the larger 90-acre tract. Staff use this as a cleanup item in that a lot cannot have two different zoning designations. So, where we are, you can see the parcel there north. It's on the east side of North 240th, and you'll see that just to the southeast is the recently approved wedding venue. This is the comprehensive plan. Existing residential, agricultural, and landfill and supporting uses are all in the neighborhood. Couple pictures of the site. This is the view from up top. There is no residence on the 90-acre tract. The only thing that is there is this barn, this accessory building. And then, if you look to the west, it's a beautiful view because you're way on top of the hill. You can see the Elkhorn River there. The Planning Commission recommended approval and asks that you concur with that recommendation.
Okay. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Does anybody on the public want to comment on item C? Seeing none, Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I want to ask if, could you go back? First of all, the graphics are terrific. You always do a great job. Go back to one of those first where you show the land, yeah, there. Now, I'm curious, when you do cut off that portion where the single-family home is going to be, right, what does that do for the entrance, you know, if somebody, if later on they want to sell that other parcel for development and have to come in for rezoning or something, or whatever they may do, how does, does someone have entrance and egress to that other property? I mean, is that going to be an island and going to have problems with it?
Well, again, everything highlighted in that blue line is the property.
Right.
Sorry, let's go back. So if the property to the east was ever to be developed, that will have to go through the full subdivision process, dedicated roads, access approved by the county engineer's office.
How would they get access?
Well, right now, there is, let me see here, I don't know if you can see them out. Yep, there is a drive that goes right up in here, kind of parallels this line, which serves this house here, which is owned by these applicants.
Okay.
So they share that drive. But if the remainder of that property was ever to be developed, they would have, that wouldn't work, and they have to go through the full subdivision process.
Okay, well, let me ask my question, try to be more clear. It looks to me like if they're sharing a driveway and so forth, if they sell that other land for development, what are they going to do about getting in and out, the buyers of the other land? I assume, let's say that it's not family members, that it's a stranger who buys maybe four or five houses, get built there, how do they get in and out if they're sharing a driveway up there at the top? I mean, what, where would, where would the?
There would have to be a new drive approved by the engineer's office.
And where would that go? Is it, is there, would it have to go through, well, my question is, it looks like it'd have to go through the other property.
Well, again, this is not, this is all owned by the same people.
Okay, and let's say they sell it. I buy, all of us buy lots, all the commissioners have a lot there, okay? How do we get in and out? I mean, it looks to me like it's, in the future, it would be very difficult because right now there's some people that are going to share a driveway, and that's always a problem. I'm just concerned, I'm just concerned that there'd be adequate provision for the future that they're going, people who buy those lots are not going to be landlocked, that they're going to have simple entrance and exits.
Right, and they wouldn't be, Commissioner Boyle, because through the subdivision process, they would have to get the engineer's office for a new drive off of 240th.
Where's 240th?
Over on the west-hand side, right here.
Okay, so how do they get it when that property, right there, right where you are, is going to be, is owned by a person and they have their home on it, how do, how do the other people get in and out of that if that's private property?
Well, that would be through a subdivision.
Okay, we're not, we're not on the same page.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a lawyer looking for a fight. Here's what happens, because I've got, I've got, done cases like this, and sometimes they're so simple, two homes side by side that share a driveway. Oh, my lord, that is the, that is a disaster. Never share a driveway with anyone, that's just not, never do that. So here you got this property, that little thing sticking out there that's on 204th, the other property doesn't touch that, that I see.
No, it does. This area, let me get, this area right here all touches 240th, so the engineer would have to grant them approval to put it in a dedicated public street.
Okay, let me.
And then lots could be sold off from that.
Maybe I don't understand that, but isn't that the part, that little part that's on 200 and whatever it is, isn't that what we are rezoning for private for a home? So that becomes?
No, we're rezoning it just so it goes to agricultural, and so the entire 90 acres is zoned agricultural.
Right.
If and when they, the, you or myself or someone else buys it and they want to split it and put homes there, then it goes through the full subdivision, dedicated public road.
We're still not on the same page.
We're still not, oh, boy, okay, okay.
I know it has to go through all that stuff. I know all that, but I'm really curious about where do they have a driveway without going through that property, that little thing that's not the same color, not green, that's going to be a private residence, it looks like to me.
No, 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 don't, don't think that there'll be a house on, on that property.
There won't.
There'll be a house somewhere on that 90 acres.
On that area that's blue?
The, the blue lined area, there'll be a house somewhere in there.
Okay, well, I just, I won't be here when they come back and have the fight, but I'm just concerned that they're not going to have, it's going to be a real mess unless we make a dedicated entrance to that other property somewhere, somehow. So that's all I'm saying, and I, I just, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, but I don't think I am. I see, I see a real legal battle coming.
Yeah, we do not do subdivisions by shared accesses anymore.
Well, I, I don't see how those people are going to get in and get out unless they have to drive through that other property, so that's my concern.
Okay.
But I don't know if I communicated it very well.
I'm sorry we can't get on the same page. We'll have to.
It's all right.
Have coffee sometime so we can get on the same page.
Yeah, it's hard to get, like Claire said, it's hard to be on the same page. Thank you. You do really good work, and I really appreciate the graphics. It helps tremendously.
Seeing no further questions, again, there, the public, public hearing is still open. Does anybody want to comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public meeting. What's the will of the board?
I'll do.
Motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item D.
Excuse me, excuse me, Commissioner Morgan, do you? Apologize, Commissioner Morgan voted no, all the commissioners voting yes.
Item D, a farmstead lot split primarily, primarily preliminary plot request for Steve Parson, Terry Parsons, Jean Wilcox, Ryan Radon, and Eric Radon, applicants of proposed Lot One of Parson Subdivision in the east half and southwest one-fourth of Section 10 dash Township 16th North Range, 9th East of 6 PM parcel number 010142000, address 30750 Bennington Road. We'll open the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Chair, these next three items are all for the same property. So the requests are for our typical farmstead lot split, which separates an existing housing, outbuildings, and separate them from the farm ground, and then the lot split property is assigned RR2 zoning, just for the lot split property. All three requests are recommended for approval by the commission. So for the planning commission, they are separating off a seven acre tract, which encompasses the house, some outbuildings, from the parent 79 acres. As required by the engineer's office, they are dedicating 50 feet along the north side of Bennington Road. I have no additional comments on the final plot, and then the rezon is from agricultural to RR2, just for the approximate seven acre tract they're splitting off. So I do have a few slides here. There is the property north side of Bennington Road and just a little bit east of Highway 275, way out on the northern edge of the county. Here's the comprehensive plan. It's in the area designated agriculture and flood plain. Here's a zoning map. You can see it's surrounded by agricultural zoning. Some pictures of the site, our posted signs. There's the house on the right, some accessory buildings on the left. Here you can see a blow up of the survey, so all of the buildings, the grain bins, the garages, the sheds are encompassed in that seven acres. And over on the right-hand side, which you probably can't read because it's small, they are dedicating the north side of Bennington Road to the county, as requested by the engineer. As I mentioned, the planning commission is recommending approval of all three. So, Mr. Chair, if you could separate.
You want to vote separately?
Yes.
Okay, well, we have item, right now only, the only one open is item D for public hearing. Are there any public comment for the public hearing on item D? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Commissioners Rogers and Kavanaugh.
Shoot.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Can it suffice? Do I need to open and close for E and F? Or can I just vote on? Did the same thing you've mentioned.
I think you need to open, do the public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing for item E. Public hearing is open. Any questions? Public hearing is closed. What's the will of the board? Motion approved by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item F, we'll now open the public hearing for item F. Any proponents or opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing for item F. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle, I am reading a very good book right now, First Person Stories of the Attack on Pearl Harbor. I'm going to bring that in so we can both get on the same page.
Animes.
I'll tell my intern Chelsea.
Yes.
Because she and I have worked together on that, mostly her.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Okay. Item G is public hearing to permit discussion and the presentation of testimony regarding the revision of the Department of General Assistance and Primary Care Network Guidelines. Madam Director.
Good morning Commissioners, Melissa Seawick, Director of General Assistance. We are mandated to have a biennial review of our guidelines, and that's what we are.
Ms. Seawick, sorry, real quick, I, I think we need, we haven't opened the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing for item G, sorry.
We're in the midst of our biennial guideline review right now, and this is just part of the process to get additional feedback from anybody that would like to speak on it. Thus far, we have had two departmental meetings with our staff to go over any of their feedback, questions, concerns, things that they would like to be changed. We have also had two public forms. They were both held on Monday, September 23rd. Commissioner Kavanaugh attended that, and we had three people that attended. They were all landlord, landlords or representatives of landlords, and that wa, and then we had an evening session as well, and nobody attended that. We sent out over 500 letters to landlords, other medical vendors we're working with, clients, and other community members that we collaborate with. We've received some emails, some phone calls as far as what they would like to see as far as revisions goes, but it's been fairly minimal that would affect our guidelines. There's a lot of things we want to do, policy and procedural wise, but as far as guidelines, what we're hearing is people are asking for a rent increase, and currently we pay $500 max for rent and utilities each month for a client, and we've done a rent survey, and as far as the rentals available in the community, that is only about 3% of the rentals available in the community that would fit that. We are looking to open it up to $600 a month, max benefit for our clients, and that would open up the market to 17% of the rentals. We have that in within our budget. We kind of, when we were doing our budget, we planned for that potential increase. And the effect to our budget, if everybody on our program that we pay for every month would get that additional $100, it would be about $350,000 increase. Again, we have that in our budget. That would not happen unless our numbers significantly increased because we have a lot of people that are at OHA, they only get $50 a month. That would not increase. We have plenty of people that are in shared living situations where they're living with their parent, a friend, and that increase, that rent would not change at all either.
This is a public hearing. Anybody want to comment on item G? Commissioner Borges and then Commissioner Boyle.
Thanks, Melissa. Can, and Mr. Chair, can you tell me, how many more public hearings do we have? Is this?
We will keep this open until November 26.
November 26.
And then we will close it. And what we typically do is we wait until today to get any more feedback, and then we'll submit our revisions. We have our guidelines posted throughout the community, and we post them online as well, so we'll do that again, and then anybody can comment on our revisions, and then the, and we'll bring it back on the 26th of November. We can close it, and then we'll bring it back to you guys on December 10th to approve as of January 1.
When you say online, just on our website, or did we use social media to?
We just go on our, our website, General Assistance's website.
Okay.
But we, we mail letters, we email, we are in contact with other agencies, we have it posted within our department. We don't typically get a lot of feedback historically.
No, we haven't. But, so can you email me the notice that you are sending out?
Yes.
Just so that we can maybe you tap into our social media to see if anybody would want to add comment? Thanks.
Thanks.
Commissioner Boyle.
Would you do the same for me, too?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I have some kind of off-the-wall questions that Commissioner Duda sent me. Some of these deal with transportation. I, a couple of weeks ago, I was at Baker's Supermarket on Saddle Creek in Leavenworth, and I got gas, and there was a fellow who was struggling to walk across the gas area. I mean, it was really awful, and he had a, an appliance that he was using that was just really ineffective and not good. Anyway, so I gassed up the car, and I was going to frankly give him a ride if I could. So I went around, and he was laying next to the bus bench, and he had, he had helped me, well, excuse me, he had put a gallon of milk in his backpack, and it threw his balance, and he fell, and I, I was not able to help him. So I called the rescue squad and everything else. The end of the story is, of course, the rescue squad can't give him a ride, so I gave him a ride to his home, and they followed me. And the funny part is, he had the liability that I didn't say anything to him, of taking him in the place. And this is something I referred to you, and we talked about it, and he was, he's pretty much a, very independent, so I don't think he wanted anything from us. Okay, but I'm curious about, you know, I mean, I don't go to the grocery store every day of the week, but I was at Hy-Vee on Leavenworth 55th, and I drove up 55th, and there's a woman carrying a couple of big heavy sacks. I pulled over and rolled the window down, and, would you like a ride? And of course, she screamed back, I don't know you. And so I said, I'm Claire Duda, and she, oh, now I'm not getting in the car. No, I said my name, so she got in the car and I gave her a ride. She went up to the, what used to be the Masonic Manor, the Elm, Elm Tower, or whatever, and there were quite a few people, I, I talked to some who lived there that, and the, particularly, it's just a constant hill going up there, and very difficult, and of course, in the wintertime, it's the worst, but, and I, I'm trying to figure out if we have some kind of transportation that could be available. Maybe we ought to be telling the grocery store, they ought to have somebody come up and pick them up once in a while or something, but it just seems like it's, it's just, it makes life difficult when they can't, when they don't have that transportation after carry groceries, and I see people in that area, I live in that area of town further east, and I see that all the time, people lugging stuff along Leavenworth Street and where, and I, I just wish there, I hope, I wish we could come up with some kind of a transportation system for people who are receiving these benefits, and I'd like just to bring that up because I think it's a real need. Something else that's really a need, and this is a little bit off the wall, transportation again, but I frequently see people, and I'm not going to mention the auto dealer, but the car's broken down, and very often, it's a woman with children in the car, and she's got the engine up. I mean, I, I mean, I, I don't even, when I buy a car, I don't even open the, I, I haven't even looked at the hood of the car that I'm driving now. I, I never did. I just don't bother with it. That's how I am, because I can't do anything about it anyway. So I used to get a car repaired out in Elkhorn, this guy would save all the parts, and he'd show them to me, and he was real serious, and I shouldn't have done this, but I said, you know, for all I know, this could be a Maytag, and he just looked at me. So anyway, anyway. So I wonder if there's some way to help put together a program that would be affordable, just like we do this rent subsidy and stuff, for people who have car breakdowns, you know, I mean, if we could have a tow, tow company that we could retain and have them on a contract, and then people who need that help could call, call somewhere, maybe you, that's, gets you into a lot of things, but to get their, get their cars out of there, because it's just really, you know, my dad years ago bought a car in Council Bluffs, and he was, there were no guarantees on anything, you know, he leased a lot, and that was it. And my dad worked very hard. He was making about 75 cents an hour when he started working making ice cream, and he started driving this car, we never had a family car, actually, but he was driving this car, and the transmission fell out, it was being held up by cardboard, and that was it. It's too bad. So I think this is what, they're not doing that today, but very close to that.
Right.
And so I, I, I think these people, you know, these folks need a little bit of a boost on some real common things. I'd like to ask you to consider a tow service that people could call to, at their cars when they break down, because they seem to break down a lot more frequently than others, you know, others. I also, we used to get quite a few, some people coming in complaining about, not complaining, but being denied their benefits, and Bob McGowan was your attorney at the time, and Bob's a friend of mine, but anyway, so, and I don't think we ever really did much good for the people who came, at least in my view, but I'm concerned about like a grand, a grandmother who puts her name on a car title to help her granddaughter, and that makes, kicks in, and she's got an asset which she doesn't have. and that makes... kicks in, and she's got an asset which she doesn't have. And I'd like to see if you have... if you have anything worked out on that. I'd like to see that, because that really is an important relationship that needs to be encouraged, not discouraged. And I guess, do you still have quite a few denials, or do you have some going on?
We have denials, absolutely. But as far as using... having to use Bob McGowan, I think we've used him may... I don't even know if we've used him at all this year. We used to have quite a bit of appeals. I think we do a really good job right now, kind of figuring it out within the department and relooking at that case.
Okay, I'll visit with you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You're doing a great job, Melissa.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borgson.
Well, you bring up... thank you, Mr. Chair. You bring up one of the issues that the transportation is a huge issue. And Commissioners Boyle, idea of maybe reaching out to the tow service to see if they would have a reduced rate to help these folks. But the problem is where they're going to take it and where they're going to get it fixed. But that's, again, something else we can talk about. But as he was starting his conversation about transportation, it was interesting, because there was just a... Montgomery County started a program where, like, how we subsidize... you would subsidize, like, cab rides, or bus rides, or Uber, or Lyft rides. They actually worked with their... the small buses and smart app on the phone, and the county actually started to go pick up folks, which ended up being cheaper than paying for their... the Uber, or the Lyft, or whatever. So, anyway, I think there's some things that we could talk about. Again, transportation, we could have a whole summit on transportation, because it doesn't matter what issue we talk about. Transportation is always, if not the first, one of the top five issues that keep people from being able to move forward. So, anyway, maybe that's another conversation we can have. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
I... this is something that I thought about, and I... I'm just gonna say it publicly. I haven't... I don't know if I talked to this with the previous director at Corrections. I haven't mentioned the... I think I may have mentioned it to Mike. But what I'd like to see happen is that, and of course, we don't have them there that long, but I would like to see us have a garage ourselves, the county garage, where we could have men and women who are incarcerated for periods of time have... work in a garage, kind of a work release, I don't know, something that may be on the same property, where these cars could be totally brought to. And we could have people learning skills and working on cars and so forth. On the other hand, when you drive out 24th Street, there's a lot of garages, one person, you know, one owner, privately owned. But there's a lot of garage work out there, and I think they must be pretty decent, because they have cars coming and going all the time. So those kind of places, individuals, not... I'm not talking about going to, you know, big, huge operation. But I think there's some opportunity to do some things that would add some income to the neighborhoods, and also possibly even getting some men and women out and working in those garages so that, you know, they have someplace to go after they're released. I think there's a possibility of doing that. And of course, Metro Community College is terrific. That's another one that's out of this world. The things they do is just over the top. So, anyway, there's things to do, and I appreciate... I appreciate your comments about transportation, because that's a big deal. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Being that we'll keep the public hearing open. With that, we'll go on to committees and action items. The finance report on item one under finance is as presented. We'll go on to item G, which is the Human Resources Committee. And item one is the weekly personnel report from civil service as submitted. The legislative issues. Note, you all got an email about the Tri-County meeting, and I know you all are feeling back within dates. Just note, the comment that was made about hosting it at No More Empty Pots. If we want to do one with the senators, I think that's an option. We have started the wheels moving to have the meeting with the Tri-County people at 75 North on 30th. So that's where they're looking. But if we want to do the separate one with the state senators, we can definitely plan on No More Empty Pots and find a date for that. Commissioner Boyle.
You know, I think we were talking about, I think it might have been, I'm not sure who it was, but I'll give it to Commissioner Duda. I think he suggested going to the kitchen area, the woman that talked about the kitchen and the food thing.
Yep, it's No More Empty Pots.
And we were talking about having a meeting there, I think.
I like that.
That'd be great. I think it'd be unusual, but it would be a good way to show what's going on.
So, we'll talk to Sean about trying to get the senators from the county together there. Look for a date.
I think we're still working on that date, and I think a lot of the commissioners responded with the 20...
That's the Tri-County.
Oh, the Tri-County, okay.
The circle. Okay. So with that, we'll work on that.
Good.
You got a legislative one?
I have a couple of them, yeah. I... one of the things that I brought up some time ago, and I like to kind of put up on our radar, is something called inclusionary zoning. And inclusionary zoning, I brought up several years ago at a national meeting, National Association of County Officials. And oddly enough, the head, the president of the Home Builders for the United States was there, and we had a conversation, and he was from Los Angeles. And he... they were opposed to it. They said the reason they were... inclusionary zoning, and I see these things going on, and I think, boy, we missed the boat. And the city really is the one that probably should be pushing this. But here's how it works. When a developer starts talking about, Jay Noddle starts talking about developing 192nd and Dodge from wherever it is, 132nd out to 512th Street, or whatever. All this land, all this stuff, and this big development going on, you know, and all this money put into it, you know. Okay, well, what inclusionary zoning does is it peels off, it calls, it takes 1% or so of the project's cost, and it gives it back to the inner city, in effect. And it does things with the building, affordable housing and all those things. It funds all those things that need to be taken care of. It even does things like tree removal and all these things to make neighborhoods safer and nicer and look better. But anyway, inclusionary zoning is a... takes a money, takes a chunk of money off that, a percentage off the project. That's... and the president of Home Builders was opposed. He said, you know, that really, why do the developers have to bear the burden? Which is a good point. But what he did, and what they did, is something we... I doubt we could do. Los Angeles County put on the ballot an affordable housing project, and it was one and a half billion dollars, and it passed. So, not that we would do anything like that, but I don't know whether we would be able to get an affordable housing thing through. And I'm not even sure it's a county operation. But I think we need to raise the radar. I talked to Senator Chambers about it, and he was very much in favor of it. And then the death penalty came up, and that, of course, got his focus, and I understand that. But I think it's something we should look at, because it may be worth too late, I don't know. But when these projects come up and people get TIF, and they... and property taxes are frozen and things like that, they get benefits and other things taking place, I think we ought to look into it. I had something else, and I got so many notes over here, I'll... I guess I'll have to bring that up at another time. But I... oh, I know what I wanted to do. In the agenda today, we had a list of attorneys getting raises. And I think that's... I don't really like that whole concept for a lot of reasons. One of them is that it can cause some strife in the office when people can look and see what some other employees working, what they're making, because it's a public record. And I just don't... I don't know that that's what we want to do. I think the county attorney, you know, should be able to... I don't understand why, it's an old law, I guess, why he has to ask us for permission to hire people. I think he ought to be able to do that, just like every other office, whatever they're doing. He ought to be able to do the same thing they are. That's my opinion. I think we ought to get that repealed, or at least amended.
Commissioner Boyle, if you want to hold it. Commissioner Borgson's got a legislative meeting to get those ideas on next week.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to hold them.
Sure.
You can put them all through there.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Craft, you have your...
Commissioner Boyle was talking about affordable housing. And when I first came on board on the county board, it was one of the issues I tried to address, and you and I talked about it, where a certain percentage of value for development goes to affordable housing. But at that time, I was talking about in that subdivision. And when I was on the Omaha City Council, I tried like heck to get affordable housing built into the subdivisions, so that there'd be this great diversity. You know, being poor doesn't mean you're dumb. Being poor doesn't mean you're a crook or a thief. Being poor just means you're poor. You may not have the fanciest clothing. You may not have a workable car. There's no sin in being poor. Absolutely no sin in being poor. The... but I was never, ever able to get anywhere on the city council with that. Silver Spring, Maryland, is one place where every development has to have a certain percentage of their units for affordable housing. And that is not just temporary, that is forever, from my understanding. And there are many other places that have it. We should have that here in Nebraska also, before it gets incomprehensible to remedy. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no other discussion, we'll go to item three, which is the public hearing. To... excuse me, wait. Sorry, item three on HR, resolution setting the salary for the Douglas County Election Commissioner and Deputy Election Commissioner for the four-year term beginning January 1, 2020. Diane, you take the lead on this.
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator. State statute requires this board to set the election commissioner and the deputy election commissioner's salaries at least 60 days prior to expiration of the current term. And the resolution in front of you sets that salary for the four-year term beginning January 1, 2020. In your packets, there's a letter that references a compensation study that was conducted with the assistance of the Human Resources Department, and it summarizes the recommendation for the salary for that four-year term.
Is there a motion, seconded by the board? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Boyle.
I'd like to speak to this, having been a former election commissioner. And then the process used to be that you had to go to the state legislature and have them change the law, which, of course, when they're making about, at the time, probably about $8,000, it was a little hard to go down and talk to them about a salary. But Monty Taylor was election commissioner, and a terrific... became a terrific friend of mine. And Monty was also jury commissioner, and he was making $7,500 a year, and I was making $6,000 a year. And we finally got it up a little bit and got it changed. But I want to speak to the salary today. I think this is appropriate, very reasonable. And I want to speak to how this office operates. I'll say first off that, in my opinion, we have... we have a terrific election commissioner. And I'll be honest, I, having been there, I think this guy's the best. I've never seen... he's just really accommodating. He has a spirit of bipartisanship, and he treats... I know firsthand, he treats Democrats very well, treats them fairly, and that's the essence of his job. He is a Republican. And it just... it's set up so there's a Republican and a Democrat there, but... and that's kind of a little archaic, I guess. But when you look at the history of why that office was set up, that's why it's the way it is. But we're fortunate to have the quality of election commissioner we have. The job requires a great deal of skill. It requires attention, incredible attention to detail. Names have to be spelt correctly, they have to be put in the same place. We probably should talk to them about whether or not they really need to be rotated. That was done back in the early 1900s, because there was quite... the voting public was quite illiterate. And so they tried to scramble the names so that they couldn't be told to vote for the first name on the ballot, or the third name down, that kind of thing. So, anyway, I just want to say that we're fortunate to have him, and I think the salary is reasonable. There's a tremendous amount of responsibility, and that's really the key to this pay. It's, you know, I mean, he's there... the office functions year-round, and they have a lot of things they have to do to get prepared. And I've compared the elections, running an election is like trying to serve everyone in Douglas County an ice cream cone at the same time and have none of it melt. And this guy is a master at it. So, and it's year-round. I know everybody thinks, well, it's election day, and it's over and done. What do you do when there's not an election? I used to get asked that question all the time, and of course, with my sense of humor, I said, "I'd just sit at home and wait for the check," you know. But anyway, that's not what I did. But that's the way... this office has a lot of responsibility, and I want to speak to that. So, I think I've said it five times, so I'll let it go. But I'm in favor of this increase.
Seeing no further, there's a motion, seconded. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
There is a need for, well, just note for the record, the amendments of the September 17th Human Resources Committee meeting. There is a need for executive session for labor negotiations and litigation. So with that, we reserve the right to enter into executive session in order to protect the public's interest with respect to discussion regarding labor negotiations and litigation. What's the will of the board?
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote. And again, we're going in for labor negotiations and litigation. Note for the record that the scheduled 1:00 today for the Child and Youth Services meeting had been canceled this morning. So just note that, if anybody's watching, that 1:00 later today is canceled.
And I need Commissioner Kavanaugh Rogers. Motion passes seven to zero.
You're a yes, Commissioner Kavanaugh? Okay, perfect. I've got you.[1731.29][1731.29](Laughter) [S02] I'd rather you.[1736.12][1736.12](Laughter) [S01] And you're a yes to adjourn? Okay, Commissioner Morgan's a yes. No, you're fine.
Always say yes.
And Commissioner Boyle is not here. Okay. All right, motion passes. Commissioner Boyle is absent. All commissioners present voting yes.